Meeting of the Persipony Troy Hills Board of Education to order on August 21st, 2025. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8th, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on July 29th, 2025: The Daily Record, The Star Ledger, Persipony Focus, Tap into Persipony Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per Bylaw 168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our Video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our board attorney, Ms. Gilfillan, will now administer the oath of office to the appointed board member. Well, Mrs. Delafave, join us in the front, please.
Congratulations, Mrs. Delafave. I'm going to administer the oath of office to you. I would like you to, I state your name.
I, Nicole Delafave.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Nicole Delafave.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of a member of a board of education.
For the office of a member of a board of education.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
And am not disqualified to serve due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS-18A:12-1.
And am not disqualified to serve due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS-18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, may we have the attendance roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham.
Here.
Mr. Barrios.
Here.
Mrs. Delafave.
Here.
Mr. DeVito.
Here.
Mrs. Mayer.
Here.
Mr. Rea.
Here.
Dr. Wright.
Here.
Mrs. Chappell.
Here.
Mrs. Kogan.
Here.
All right. I think we're going to take a quick break to welcome the newly appointed board member and probably take some pictures with the family, so don't walk away, please. So, all right, yeah, five minutes.
And there's cookies.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot the cookies.
I wanted to say "farve," and then it's "no-are."
Vacancies in the membership of boards of type 2 districts. You guys are of type 2 districts. Why do we need to say "type 2 districts"? This is applicable to this district. So it should be vacancies in the membership of the board, period, and then we get rid of all the other monsets. Like, it should be type 2, because then you're going to be like, well, what if we're type 1? What if we change? Are we a type 1? Are we an appointed? Like, that just agitates me.
So there's some nuances there, right? Is that centered?
So your thing is November election. What you should write reflects a type 2 November election.
Anyone a cookie, Brownie?
I might. I'll get one really quick.
So I don't remember. Do you remember the portfolio appeals process? They said portfolio appeals process.
Yeah, I can tell you're a little warmer than this. I don't like the view.
I guess it's to show that they're, this is part of the work.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, it's some kind of review.
Right. Because they can use, there's a few ways that can reach that. They can use portfolios, they can do bunch of things.
Think of a portfolio of, like, of their work. There's one thing I was reading both, and I was like, I can't remember what that is.
I was reading something today, trying to read something today, and I couldn't. I couldn't bring it into focus. It was a bad song.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Downhill.
I know. Crazy. And if it's right, like, print, I can see better than paper, right? That's, yeah. scrimmage next Friday? And I think the first meeting is on Wednesday of the first week of school. How about you, Ari?
scrimmage's on Sunday. None of us are going to be there, because that's when Scott's scrimmage is her 100th birthday parade. So Billy can't go to the party, he can go to her games. So it's all, yeah, girl, my daughter's torn up about it. And she's starting her first meeting.
You know, something.
Nice, man. Are you going to, can you watch it afterwards?
Yeah, they're going to have recording.
All right, we're going to resume our meeting. Well, at this time, I'm going to suspend tonight's regular agenda to allow for 2024-2025 graduation results and the New Jersey graduate proficiency result presentation. Dr. Gigante.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Happy summer. Tonight is a quick one. This is not one of the typically long ones. I'm just reporting out on our current seniors, who last year's juniors took the New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment, the GPA. If you've been following the news at all, there's been some talk now about new tests, right? And the NJSLA is going to be changing their format, or its format, I should say, and so the GPA also. For now, though, this is the old one, which wasn't even old. It was just a few years old. This will also be administered, this one, this old one, will be administered in the fall one more time for these current seniors who may not have passed, to give them one more shot. There was a shot in the summer as well. We did have a couple of students take it. We don't get a huge turnout for that one. But in the fall, we can offer it again. And then that's it, so they say, like, so far today. It does change very quickly sometimes, but right now, they're saying that's the last one of this one. And then the new one, the adaptive one, like, the adaptive NJSLA, will be taking place. So, without further ado, where's my, I'm pointing to this, right? There we go, got it. So just a little bit about the assessment. It is given in 11th grade, and it's testing English Language Arts and mathematics, just like the NJSLA. There are just two scores, though. It's either you are deemed graduation-ready or you're deemed not yet graduation-ready. It is a requirement, as of right now, for the current seniors, class of 2026. There is no further mention of class of 2027 and our current juniors, so. There are alternate pathways, I'll talk about a little bit. If you do not pass with all the attempts that you are offered, you can take an alternate assessment, the SAT, PSAT, AccuPlacer, ACT, and achieve cut scores on that, which can take the place. If you don't pass, say, math, but you get the cut score on math SAT, you're okay. That's your pathway to graduation, then, instead of this assessment. So here's our slide for the ELA results. So, like I said, it's not that old of a test. This was just the fourth administration of it, and it's going to change. But up there, I represent the classes of 23, 24, 25, and 26, our current seniors. And we look at the results in the groups of all students, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and English language learners. In the all-students category, we do see how the state did. So I put those answers there in gold. So you can see that last year's, and remember, these are, of course, different students, right? Each year. And when I give my big presentation on only NJSLA scores, some of you who've been on the board for a while always hear me say it's very hard to compare a different group of kids to another group of kids. But for what it's worth, the class of 2026, our current seniors, were performing just a little below the prior class, with that 87.4 down a little bit from the 89. But you see the state dipped as well in the all-students category. So they dipped, and we dipped, just a little bit. Economically disadvantaged, same thing, a little dip. But happily, we saw a little bit of an increase in students with disabilities. And perhaps the most remarkable and happy news is that our ELLs really made a nice jump there. That is huge. From 7.1 graduation-ready to 23.8% of our English language learners graduation-ready in English. So that's something really to be celebrated and happy about.
But can you attribute that to that it's such a big jump?
Well, we've been working very hard.
I know.
Yes.
That's a big jump.
Yes.
It's a small group of students, so.
It could depend on the mix of the kids.
Depending on their English readiness, I think, of much greater impact due to their size.
Because you're taking one grade level only, and then the English language learners in that one.
Remember that next year, there's a different mix that is in this program.
Yeah, and there is an exemption, but, I mean, it was the exemption for all years. There is an exemption in NJSLA and NJGPA for students who arrive very close to, say, when the test is going to be. There's an exemption if you're June 1st or later from the prior year. You're not taking the ELA one. You're still taking the math, but you're not taking the English one. But still, we're happy to see that kind of a jump. And then in math, same sort of story, that we dipped a little bit for all students and basically stayed the same. I mean, we did go up a hair for the economically disadvantaged and just down a hair for students with disabilities. And then a very nice jump again for those English language learners. And Dr. Mulrooney, want to talk about the interventions? We've included these, a couple of slides historically in this presentation about the interventions we've been doing during the school year in the summer.
So during the school year, we broke it up into elementary, middle, and high school. And I'm going to get a little closer to that screen, if that's okay with you, all right? So at the elementary level, the biggest change was this installation of the WIN period, which was daily 30-minute intervention time. WIN stands for "what I need." That could be remediation, it could be accelerated work, and that's for students in grades K through 3. We also have BSI teachers, reading specialists, at each elementary school. And we had two Title I interventionists divided through six schools last year, which was a tight squeeze, but they did help and provide some assistance for students as part of the INRS process and students that were struggling. We also dedicated time and finances towards parent and family nights for ELA and math support. The middle school, we have our Lunch and Learn program during lunch periods. Sometimes that's an invitation, sometimes it's by student request. Teacher office hours for extra help after school as well. ARPAS or intervention programs for math and language arts took place after school. And we made use of various intervention platforms, which are listed there. The nice thing about those are they modify the program as students perform, and the work that they give them reflects their advancement in the skills that they master. The high school, pretty much the same, homework club after school. We had the end-of-arc-period makeup intervention day, where students could meet with teachers to make up any work, to complete any assessments or reassessments, to hit those skills and bring those grades up. Of course, we had the ARPAS intervention programs as well, which were after school, and the use of those intervention platforms. Juana Nance, thank you. During the summer, it did change a little bit. Oh, thank you so much. Okay. The ESL Summer Program has been static. That's been in place for a long time. It's been very successful. That's a three-week program that runs the majority of the day, and students get instruction in math and language arts, but also in other electives and subjects. Elementary school, summer stepstones, was three weeks virtual. Last year, we were in person, but attendance was not what we wanted to be, so we shifted to solely virtual this year, and attendance wasn't great either. So today, we're actually talking with Colleen about ideas for deploying funds to look at some of her program and what options we might have, because we want to make that as efficacious as possible. Extended School Year runs for our special needs, special ed students for four weeks. That's in person. At the middle school, again, ESL Summer School continues for middle school, Extended School Year as well. We also, this is where you start to see these getting ready, four classes for math. So there's a getting ready for sixth, seventh, eighth grade math, which kind of covers and previews concepts that they'll see during the school year to try to address, you know, the forgetful middle school mind as we forget what, they push all the math out and push in all of the YouTube. This is the first year we did summer book clubs. And I heard this at a meeting with other assistant superintendents and curriculum people, where they were looking at summer reading and inviting students in for a quick, like, two-hour book clubs, to talk about the books they had read with teachers to kind of just prep them for the school year and that early assessment they're going to have when they get there in September. But I think more important was to get kids excited about the books they had read and enhance that love of reading as well. High school, I'm going to save the best one for last. We did ESL Summer School, Extended School Year, the getting ready for classes for Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. We did the summer book clubs, which were not as well-attended at the high school level as they were at middle school, but it was the first year. And the most successful program we put together this summer was the Finish Line Prep. In a second, you're going to see slides on how students achieve their graduation status. And some of it was from NJGPA, some of it was from alternative assessments or the portfolio process. The goal is to get as many students as possible to complete it via the test, right? It makes their lives easier, it makes our lives easier. So what we did this summer was, we invited all the students who, rising seniors who did not pass, to kind of like a quick boot camp kind of week. And we spent specific time looking at what that AccuPlacer test looks like. And then after three days of AccuPlacer review, they took that test right away. And we had incredible success. So the students who were, who, I don't want to, I said, the students who made the right decision to come, I think there were 28, 27 of 28 passed the AccuPlacer. So now, this is beyond them. It's out of their lives right now. They don't have to worry about any sort of remediation this school year. They don't have to, you know, give up an elective or any sort of class. And we're hoping that word spreads, and we'll be able to really bring those numbers down even more next year. And I have to credit Brian McCourt, who's our math supervisor, who, that was his brainchild, and it was really, really effective, and did it for math and for language arts. And we're excited for that moving forward. Next slide? Oh, yeah, yeah. So this is our pathways for graduation. The first category, students who graduated the prior year. And you'll see the difference in size between the high and the hills. The hills is 244, PHS is at 204 graduates. The next bullet are students who graduated through alternative pathways, okay? So the first one are substitute competency tests. They have the PSAT, the SAT, that AccuPlacer, which we make a lot of use of. 62 students at the hills used that alternative pathway via test, 31 at the high. Portfolio appeals process, 18 at the high, eight at the hills. And that's what we want to really avoid, because it's a long process. It requires a lot of student time and a lot of teacher time to teach those concepts, which then students demonstrate in their portfolio. And then the last category is via their IP's, alternative requirement in their IP. And there was four at the high. So you were at the hills. We're happy to say there were no students who were denied graduation solely due to failure to meet graduation assessment requirements. So we get everybody there via that pathway. Doesn't mean there weren't some other reasons for, and behave those students attendance-wise or things like that, but that's how we break it down. And we will take any questions at that time.
Questions from board members? Mr. DeVito?
So I think you mentioned that the standard is, the state has come back with new standards, test coming down the pipe again. Can you maybe elaborate a little bit on that? I know it's still early. I only remember seeing notification from the state about it, only, not even a month ago, so.
Yeah, they haven't given a ton of information, but what I can tell you is that much like when you, if you were listening to what Dennis said about some of those iXL and Alex, those programs that we use, and he mentioned that it's sort of tailored and customized to the student as they go, that's what this is supposed to be now. By calling it the NJSLA adaptive, it's personalized, so that students are getting questions based on the questions they're getting right. Like, your subsequent questions will be different from that student's because you got it right or wrong the question before. So it's much more personalized. They gave a couple of reasons. One, they said, is for more accurate results, because you're looking really, you're not giving kids things that are impossible, because they can't master this, they didn't answer this one right, now you're giving them that, they're never going to get it right. So more accurate measure, better security, better test security, because everybody's going to have a different test question. And I think that's not even so much about, like, looking over like this, like, in the old days, because they do them in different orders. But if you have a student doing a makeup test, a kid could say to that student, you know, there's a question on there about, well, maybe that student's not going to see the same questions. So for security reasons. And to lower test anxiety was the other thing they mentioned. So if the student is sitting there struggling and knowing, I don't get this, and they're just putting an answer, now they're going to have another one they have to sit through that they know. Whereas if they feel confident when they get it right, not that they know it's right, but they handle it, then the next one is like, oh, another one I can handle. You know, so they're saying that it'll lower test anxiety. So we haven't gotten a ton of information, but those were some of the reasons they gave for making it an adaptive test. Yeah.
And, like, the 11th graders that are taking this now, if they don't pass this one, is that one theoretically going to come out in time for them to try to take that one?
The 11th graders now, you mean the 25, 26, 11th graders?
Yes.
We don't know what they're taking yet. They've said it's going to be adaptive. They haven't said really anything but that, so I'm not quite sure. I don't know. But our current seniors get one more shot if they need it, but I don't think we're really probably going to need too many of them to try it again. Hopefully, we'll get them through, they will get the old one. Yeah, that's the last time for that one. But again, not too much information on what's coming, unfortunately. And they haven't, like, put anything out about class of 2027 graduation requirements. Like, they haven't even mentioned that.
We talked about the reassessment of the NJGPA in the fall. We'll also be able to give them that AccuPlacer multiple times throughout the fall and into the winter.
Yes, you can give the AccuPlacer at your discretion. There's no times that you have to do it, so we're able to do it.
Yeah, and Dr. Gigante is very bright, as you know. Made us eligible to be like a school that could deliver the AccuPlacer, a testing district, which really, really helps students and makes it a lot more convenient. And this is Dr. Gigante's last testing presentation, so I hope you enjoy it. I'll be in her ear, bugging her all next year, making sure we get everything right.
It'd be hard to tear myself away from this.
Right? Yes.
Do you have any insights, like, the difference between English and the state? The English results and the state average is smaller than the difference on the math results versus the state average? Is there any particular insights as to why that might be?
Yeah, English is, you see, we did, this is more of a gap.
780 and 7158.
Yeah, just a little, any particular reason why that might be?
I'm not sure.
I can tell you historically, that's always been the case. It always sort of shakes out, it always sort of shakes out that way.
Yeah, it seems to be pretty consistent that there's, like, a wider gap on math.
The gap is wider. Mm-hmm.
Every year.
I think if you look at, if you look at us compared to the state, it's pretty consistent. If you look at us compared to specific districts, it's pretty consistent. You know, there are districts working perpetually, do better than, districts that are going to always do a little better than us. It always kind of shakes out along the way. There's some variation based on, I think, when you see those cohorts, that's when you really get to appreciate a group of students' performance and a trend, so.
Any other questions?
I just want to make sure I'm clear on your question. We're, I'm just making sure, you know, the difference here, say, is seven, and the difference here is whatever, what is that, 13? That means, well, one could conclude, doesn't mean, one could conclude, that we're stronger in math. It's the gap, the bigger gap, is better.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure we're not looking at math as a...
Any particular reason why that might be? The math having the wider gap than the state average versus the English gap having a narrower gap versus the...
Yeah, I think in general, you know, math is typically tougher for students. You know, you see our average scores on math, and everyone else's average scores on math are usually lower than English. So I think when you just take that wide breadth of the whole state, the math score in the state's going to be lower than the English score in the state.
Right, but the gap between the math results versus the state average... Right, but the gap between the math results versus the state average is smaller than the English gap, and it's fairly consistent for each of the years.
Yeah, it's...
The math percentage is lower, it's a larger gap.
Yes.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure that we were clear about. Yes. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We'll miss you, Nancy.
Aw, well, you're not rid of me, I just won't be doing the assessments. I'm sure I'll be back talking about something else.
Always a lot of fun. Does this have to be out loud?
Oh, no, it was in there. It was in the last slide.
Okay, we're up to correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? No. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Okay, so we're now up to committee reports, and we have quite a few. So do you want to start on that side of the table?
Yeah, I'll go first.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Buildings and grounds met this evening in attendance with myself, Mr. Barrios, Dr. Wright, Mrs. Cogan, Dr. McHugh, Dr. Mulrooney, and Ms. Benos. We talked about the summer projects for partial roof at Mount Tabor and a partial roof at Littleton. We also discussed the Parsonny Hills lunch serving lines and the Paze Lab renovation and the summer projects. On the expansion projects, we discussed the Littleton Phase I. Trying to finish on that with a security antenna issue. And Phase II is still in the planning phase. Other projects we discussed were the Parsonny High paving, Parsonny Hills HVAC, which is a rod grant, the Lake Parsonny sign. And we also discussed any cleaning maintenance issues, but there were none. And we also discussed about the facility use forms and the possibly using from the United Way with the jets. And that is my report. There's, you should have the full minutes there if you have any questions.
Thanks, Matt. So until the security antenna issue is resolved, they won't be able to use that, right?
No, we have a temporary CO, so we are allowed to use that line of the building.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you.
Just to continue on that topic, I forget, what is the holdup? And is there anything else we can do?
So Jimmy, you want to elaborate a little bit for?
So we received everything that we had to from the county. We need to get an application from the town to be able to submit to install the antenna. And there's been a hang-up with who ultimately is responsible in the town to provide us that application. So they extended our temporary CO, and we hope to be able to get the application soon so that we can apply to put the antenna up that the town wants us to put on the building.
So we have identified who at the town needs to be involved? Or is that still an open question?
We have a contact at the town, but we're not sure if it's the proper contact because they haven't responded over the course of the last few months.
Months?
Months, months. I did have discussions with Kate and a number of other people on what the best avenue is to address this.
Okay, thank you.
Just on the buildings and grounds, Dr. McHugh, I just wanted to say thank you. There was a lot of activity going on this summer, so I, we appreciate your work and all the, you know, maintenance and everybody who's done a fantastic job to get everything ready for school opening. Mr. Vito, did you have another one, or that was your only report?
That was only, yeah.
All right, thank you. Dr. Wright?
Thank you, Mrs. Cogan. The Teaching and Learning Committee met this past Monday, August 18th. Present were myself, Mrs. Abraham, Mrs. Mayer, Mrs. Cogan, and Dr. Mulrooney. We discussed books that will be added to the course, English Core, Authors of New Jersey, hoping students really see themselves in our arena in this curriculum. It's really exciting. Will be, the committee will be reviewing more books as they come through us. We discussed the disproportionality plan that was submitted to the state last spring in regard to a disproportionate number of students classified under other health impaired classifications, and how the district is working comprehensively to ensure that students are being served appropriately, not overclassified, and brought to where they need to be for academic success across from K through 12. We also continued, at the last meeting, we discussed that we had started the summer curriculum revision review. We went through that in this meeting, completed that process in this meeting, and reviewed a large number of curriculum revisions. And across the board, some really notable things, our educators engaging with how to teach our students about social media and AI, how to enhance our unified offerings, as well as provide electives that are really engaging students, such as exploring human behavior. I would like to commend Dr. Mulrooney and our educational faculty for really doing an excellent, both quantity and quality of work in innovating and keeping our curriculum top-notch. And that is all I have for Teaching and Learning. I have, I went to a professional development.
Let me just see, are there any questions on Teaching and Learning? Mrs. Abraham?
Thank you. I just had a quick question, whether it's Wendy or Dr. Mulrooney. Would you be able to just give a, kind of like a high level of what the CCEIS plan means?
Sure. The CCEIS plan is how we deploy CEIS funds to address these at-risk students. So some of it's through, you know, PD for teachers, some of it's through learning platforms, like I mentioned earlier, some of the adaptive technology. Some of it is through programs like after-school tutoring or things like that. So we have the option to look at the predicament of our students, what their needs are, and then, you know, tailor things to best meet those needs.
Okay.
It was an exhaustive 15-page report we did. We'll be meeting again with our liaison on October 4th to resume practices. But we've done a lot with our INRS process, which is Intervention and Referral Services. And we're excited for the changes. We're trying to look at this as an opportunity to do some good for our kids.
Right, and this is, since the Department of Education's label is all over it, so I assume that this data is something that's required from them. And I always wonder, like, when we get this much data, what does the department, I don't think we may or may not know this answer, but what does the Department of Education, what do they want to do with this data? Like, besides just find out, okay, this number of students are either coming into the district, leaving the district, needing intervention services, whether IEPs, 504s, or otherwise, and they're determining, I mean, when I looked it up briefly, I thought it said ages 3 to 12, but I guess it's K through 12, right? And so I was just wondering, you know, how do they determine who needs it? And does it affect, I guess, families with, that want to do assessments for their children or they're, you know, in the process of doing an assessment, and they want to know whether their children are going to be getting services or not, and they're not going to be affected in that way, right?
I see what you're saying. I think what the state wants to know is, they want to make sure we're not classifying, as I think Dr. Wright said, disproportionate of students in a specific area. So by a razor of margins, we're deemed disproportionate in OHI. So I've talked about, out of 7,000 students, a handful of, maybe four or five kids to put us over. As we discussed in our meeting, we looked at some of those numbers, and kids who leave our district with an OHI impairment. And then, guess what, kids move into our district with it, and there are reassessments as well. So they want to make sure we're under that number. And, you know, that's the one part, that's the compliance part of it. But for us as educators, we want to use these funds to make things better for our students and make sure our child study teams are working efficiently and our INRS teams are working efficiently to help students so that if they need to be assessed by the CST, it's appropriate. And if they don't need to, they don't need to, because we put interventions in place to help them be successful.
Right, and this was just from my brief looking up afterward. It was just from 2021 onward, right? And then it's going to be continuation...
Which is a three-year, initial three-year gap, so we're entering year three, and hopefully...
And this was Rutgers, right? Rutgers did the...
Rutgers is our liaison, so, but it's through the state, state appointed.
State, okay. Yeah, okay. I guess I was just curious about what the root cause analysis or what the state...
It was just a few too many students in that, a few too many white students falling into the OHI classification, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Dr. Wright, did you want to do a liaison?
Yes, so in, back in June, I attended a school law forum, as did our attorney. And I just wanted to share a few of the highlights there. There were a number of presentations, it was a full-day professional development opportunity. Some of the topics, I think our attorney maybe thought I was a bit of a nerd, being excited about. One of the topics that I was, that I was very interested in was the effect of federalism in 2025. As we know, there is a lot of complexity in what's coming after the federal government, and sometimes it's in conflict with what the state government might be telling us. And so there's a kind of a review of some of those challenges, discussion of recent legal updates, and a presentation on twice-exceptional students, students who are both gifted and qualify for special education. And one of the real challenges there was kind of that presentation, the kind of central focus is really finding out who are these kids and when are they qualifying? And what does that demand of districts in that place? I asked Joni, and Joni uploaded all of the PowerPoints to the board packet, so if any of you'd like to review those, if you want to talk about them. Oh, I'd be right. And it was a really nice program put on by NJSBI.
I forgot to say one thing. I just want to say, Dr. Mulrooney, thank you so much for adding that thematic high school book list. I appreciate that. To the...
Interesting, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Barrios?
Thank you, Madam President. Policy met on August 5th, 2025, in attendance with myself, Ms. Chappelle, Mrs. Vito, Ms. Cogan, Dr. Mulrooney, and Ms. Benos. On your desk, you will have the policies that we reviewed. We did a comprehensive review of all the policies. We had actually pulled a policy for further review, which was Policy 2422 Statutory Curricular Requirements. I believe that went back in though, right?
No.
It's still out, right? So everything else is up for first read. And that is my report. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Barrios? Okay.
Thank you. I just had a question on Bylaw 143. And when I was reading through it, and I'm sorry that I didn't bring it up sooner with the policy committee, I just wanted to ask if, when we were talking about 143, I didn't have an issue with any of the changes that had to do with election, but just the appointment, I guess the appointment part, the part that I was wondering was, I was looking up some of the statutes, and I was wondering, because it's specifically in 10-3, when I, I did call Charlene to ask about statutes, and she sent me something and said, in all type 2 districts with, in April school election, well, that's not really applicable to us, but in type 2 districts with November school election, member terms begin on January 1st and end on December 31st. But then we also have the statement in 1215 that says, basically, that your appointment goes all the way up until the next reorg. So my question is, rather than, I know this is the first reading, and that, you know, we can discuss it further, but what I wanted to know is, can we add another statute number to the bottom of that? Because I, in my conversation with Charlene, I felt that, from what she told me, that there doesn't appear to be a definitive response when statutes kind of conflict one another, but that statute trumps policy but not one another, so it becomes a gray area where we would have to rely on the advice of our board attorney. And it was just saying that even though 10-3 delineates the beginning and end dates for a term of office, that one could argue that a person's term does not really end until the reorg, until a new person is sworn in, and they would cause a gap, right? So in order to prevent that, what was suggested to me was that the safest resolution would be to say, yes, the board member shall serve until the expiration of their term. And the other statute that I wanted to ask about was 12-9. And the last sentence in 12-9 specifically said, all members shall serve after the expiration of their respective terms until the appointment and qualification of their successors. And Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm trying to read this like an attorney, but when I read 12-9, it says, all members shall serve after the expiration. Now, when I read after the expiration, it indicates to me there is an expiration, but that their respective terms are going on until their successor. So I guess the compromise that I'm wondering, if it's a good suggestion or not, is to add 10-3 and possibly 12-9.
Can I just ask some clarification questions for you?
Yeah.
We were talking about Bylaw 143, right?
Yep.
I see 1215, 1311, I don't see 12 dash, the last two, the first two you mentioned, where are we looking here? Just so I can read it.
She, I think pulled them out. Oh, I pulled them out. Yeah, I was looking at the statutes online.
So it's not 143?
It's not referenced currently.
No, no, not referenced. I was asking if it's okay to add those statutes because, I mean, it's a discussion, but before the second reading, maybe it's a discussion for policy.
What I would say is certainly we can look at those statutes, and I have no issue, I actually like to have the statutes referenced to the extent that they're not causing confusion.
Right.
To the, I understand that we deal with policies that are, you know, statutorily heavily, heavy, but you want to be able to have somebody from the public read this and understand that, you know, this is what applies in this particular district. So what I would suggest, if that's okay with the policy chair, let me take a look at 10-3, 12-9, and see if, in fact, we can find some language that would satisfy all of that. I will say that the term of office, you serve until your successor is qualified. That has been the way that that has worked for, you know, since we established school districts in the state of New Jersey. So if that's okay with the chair?
I mean, technically, it's okay with me, but I'll leave it to the good judgment of the board president?
No, that's fine.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Barrios? All right, let's go to the other side of the table. Mr. Ray?
Okay, Communications Committee met on August 5th, attending were myself, Mrs. Chappelle, Mr. Vito, Mrs. Cogan, Dr. Mulrooney, and Mrs. Benos. There were primarily two items. One, in an effort in the spirit to further empower parents, the committee discussed creating a parent template for families to voice concerns to the state and to the township, and to advocate effectively for public education. And in addition, the committee will prepare a summary document outlining steps parents can take and key contacts to reach out to. The first documents in process, and we hope to have both ready for a draft for the September 17th meeting. And so, any questions on that? Should we do a liaison report as well?
Sure, if you have one.
No, I have one question.
Hold on, Mr. Vito.
Look at the minutes here. So we talked about a parent template, and then it was, there was, for one thing, but we discussed two different documents, I recall. So wait, one was the, oh, summary document.
The summary document, okay. And then the summary document.
That's right, okay, thank you. It just worked odd to me, thank you, sorry.
Also, the, last week, last Thursday, was the PAL board meeting, which I attended. I just want to point out to any parents that are watching, watching the video of this meeting, that registration for the fall is open for all programs, and there's a fairly robust selection. And just to avail yourself of that with the PAL. That's it.
Thanks, thank you. Mrs. Abraham, you don't have a committee report, right?
No, but I can talk about a lia, well, not really a liaison, but myself and several of us went to the flag raising for the India Day celebrations on Saturday, August 9th, and just wanted to say that it was, you know, well-attended. Everybody had a wonderful time. We had a lot of cultural programs, dance programs, songs. The flag, of course, was raised for India's Independence Day. We're at the 79th Independence Day, so next year will be 80. And we will be, we also had a number of speakers and dignitaries that were able to attend, and so I was happy to attend and had a great time, you know, mingling with a lot of the community members. And I look forward to going every single year, and I encourage everybody to come. It's a really good time, and very family-friendly, and, you know, the, the cultural programs and the dance programs are really, they're really amazing to watch, and they put a lot of work and effort into it, which I think should be appreciated. Thank you.
Yes. Great. Okay.
Ms. Cogan, would you comment on that? I also attended that. I want to reiterate what Mrs. Abraham said, it was very well-attended, it was very interesting to, to attend, I was glad I was able to do it. Thank you.
Glad we had shady spots, though, it was a little hot. Everybody else was in the sun. This is August. Mrs. Mayor.
Hello. I will do the Human Resources Report. We had our meeting on August 19th. Present were myself, Mrs. Abraham, Dr. Wright, Mrs. Cogan, Mr. Ricker, and Mrs. Benos. There were personnel matters that were discussed. Mr. Ricker discussed the staffing assignments and transfers, and the acting Assistant Principal for Central Middle School. It's in the bulletin, it's number 83, and the candidate was Andrew Hill. He's been involved in a lot of different things, so he was, there was a, I, there was a vetting process, and there were two candidates, and he was chosen. The EIS report was completed for the first two windows, and it was filed. It has summative ratings for teaching and administrative staff. New staff orientation will be scheduled for the 25th and 26th at the high school. The curriculum office has an agenda, and it's for the newly hired teachers, and it's, I have gone to every single one since I've been on the board, and it's always exciting to go, because you see all these eager people, you know, ready to go, you know, they're, they're hyped. You know, even teachers that have already taught and that are coming to our district, they're excited. So there's a lot of energy in the air that day, and all the administrators are there, and it's just a really good, good get-together, I guess. I'm sorry I'll miss this one. The Administrative Workshop was held yesterday, and the 19th, and all the principals, assistant principals, and supervisors were in attendance. There were, there were many topics, such as school safety, procedures, evaluations, and observations. I know the head of security was here, I know Kate was here, there was just a whole bunch of, you know, speakers to kind of lay out the land, kind of, as a general update. An update on the open position job postings, which is pretty good, actually, as of the 19th. There are three remaining open teaching positions for Paris, and for custodial maintenance position, and an opening for a head bookkeeper. And that's the report.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Mayor? All right, did you have any liaison?
I was at the Indian.
Do you want to talk about the Raoul Wallenberg?
Well, we didn't mention that?
No, no.
Oh, yeah, we were, I think, Mr. Rea, myself, yeah, we went to the Raoul Wallenberg dedication at Smithfield, and it's always very moving, you know, when you hear about the things that he did to save people, and, you know, ultimately lost his life, and there were speakers up, and it was very moving, you know, to hear the stories and how people talked about it in today's world, how we need more of that selflessness, you know, that kind of mentality, and the sculpture that's there. And I've lived in Parsippany forever, well, not forever, but a long time, and until I started going to those presentations, I really never noticed the sculpture. It's there, but, you know, unless you know it's there, you don't know to look for it. And the gentleman who designed it was there, and it was dedicated for compassion.
Courage and compassion.
Courage and compassion. It's two Cs that are kind of, you know, just, you know, mixed up and all, but it was really nice, and the Danish representative was here, and she spoke, and she said she'll be back every year, but it was just nice to hear that somebody who was so selfless was honored in a way that was meaningful, you know? So that was great, that was really great.
And the high schoolers that spoke were very, very good.
Yes, yes, the two high school students were awarded for their essays that they wrote. We didn't get those to read, did we? I don't think we did, no. But they, they were very nice, they were, they felt good about it, and it's an honor, it really is. They're the first recipients in a long time, they hadn't done it for a while, so, and it was just a very nice event, you know, and then we had the Indian event, so our community is so vers, you know, it's got so much here, and if you take advantage of everything, and you kind of meet all these different people, you realize how very lucky we are that there is such a diversity in our district, in our town, not even just our district.
So I was just going to expand on that event. So that was, it was sponsored by the, the multi-faith, is that right? The interfaith, the Parsippany Interfaith Council was a sponsor of that, and it was really powerful and really moving, just to add to that, I mean, it really was something special to be there and hear about, you know, everything that everybody had to say, and what an amazing man this person was, and the impact he's had now on thousands of lives that he's ultimately saved. And like you said, Judy, for years, I've driven down that, I used to go to that bus stop, and I had no idea what that sculpture really stood for, but I will tell you right now, I was driving west on Route 46, and I got stuck at that light by the Starbucks, and I looked over, and clear as day, I could see the CNC staring at me. So when you go by there, take a look, and remember him. I mean, that's the whole purpose, remember him, remember the great things that he did, and all those that he saved.
Yeah, it's a chance to learn from history, and it's a reminder of, you know, sometimes in history, we, or we go the wrong path. That was certainly one, World War II, the Holocaust, that was certainly one example, so, but it's a good reminder for everyone.
We have books here, if anybody wants to.
His biography.
Yeah, that was.
We were very involved first.
Joanie served on the, kind of, the Student Award Committee for a long time, and lassoed me into it, it was a lot of fun, and so the, the books are tremendous, the book is tremendous, his life story is unbelievable.
Thank you. Okay.
Mrs. Chappelle, you want to be there?
So on July 29th, the Critical Issues Committee met, my, present were myself, Mrs. Abraham, Mr. DeVito, Mrs. Cogan, and Mrs. Benos. During this meeting, we had the opportunity to finish our review of the Code of Governance that had been in draft for quite a while, incorporated a number of updates, and it was attached with the minutes for your review. So if there's any changes, just let us know. Any questions about that? Okay. I do have a little, oh, sorry.
Is this up for some type of, will this be voted on as a board to, to accept?
This is really just.
I don't think it needs a vote, but, right now, we're just, right now, we're asking for feedback.
Yeah.
To make sure that it's, you know, relevant, it has everything.
Don't we have to accept it as a board? If not accepted by vote, it has to be, I mean, how do you bind it?
Agreed, but I, I think at this point, we're just asking for feedback.
In order, in order to, for it to be an operative document for the board, you're correct, it has, there has to be a vote.
Correct.
So then, could we make a, could I make a motion then, that we vote on this at the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I'm sorry, I guess when, I wasn't sure if that was the plan, or was there something else?
You're very right, I don't think we had a plan, and it was clearly defined, so.
Right, unless we get too many comments to get it ready by the next board meeting, can we put that little caveat in?
Did we mention something about September 17th as a potential?
That's the next board meeting, yep.
I'm thinking there's more than one.
Don't bring us back here too often.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Tim. So as a liaison, I meant, I went to the Educational Services Commission at Morris County meeting, which I, you know I love, and it was wonderful, again, to hear them preparing for the new school year. They are very, very busy. The list of bus routes that they are covering for all of Morris County is insane, so I had the pleasure of sitting in, no issues to report, they are doing well.
All right, thank you. Because we have a new member, the updated committee assignments will come out soon, and then something I should have probably said, unfinished business, and I'll try to remember next time, our lawyer provided the township with a draft ordinance regarding pilot funds on July 31st, and we have not heard anything back yet, so that's the status of that. And that is the end of the committee liaison reports, unless anybody has anything else. So we will move to the approval of the regular and executive minutes of July 24th, 2025, special meeting July 31st, 2025, and work session August 7th, 2025. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Mayor, and a second. Dr. Wright, roll call.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes, on regular and executive of July 24th, no on July 31st, and yes to work session of August 7th.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Delafay?
Upstein.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes, to the regular executive on July 24th, no to the 31st, yes to the work session
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
No to the 31st, and yes to the others.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes. Motion passes. Superintendent Bulletin Number 2, Dr. Mulrooney.
Sure. How's everybody doing? Good? All right, so as was mentioned in the HR Committee Report, we did have a minretreat this week, it was two days, and it's just a great, a great two days. You know, we spent kind of all summer apart from each other, and to get together 40-strong, I think is a good thing, and we do a lot of procedural things, a lot of punchless items as far as procedures and safety, and all of our reports and, and everything else, but we do devote a lot of time, I wouldn't say a lot of time, but a, a good amount of time, and important time to talking about leadership, and what it means to be a building leader or an instructional leader, and how you are, in many ways, the most visible, important person in the building, and everything that you do, everything that you say, and how you say it, and how you stand, and where you go, sends a message and reinforces what you, what you feel to be important. And we talked about how conversely, on one hand, you're the most important person, and on the other hand, you're the least important person, because what matters are the students and the teachers, and how they're interacting, and you're really there just in a, in a position of leadership. The higher we go up, the more people we're, we're here to serve, and that's what we really drove home, because that's what it's all about. So it's a great couple of days, we cover a lot, and I think we all leave, leave it feeling kind of pumped up to start the school year, and, and get excited about all these new ideas, initiatives. We, we talked a, a little bit about, like, little things you can do as a principal or supervisor that mean a lot, be it following up with a student after a, a performance they were in, or stopping by a teacher's classroom and saying, like, do you have to go to the bathroom? Like, I will, I will cover your class, you know what I mean? Or if there's a teacher on duty saying, I'm, I am going to sit here, I've, I've got half an hour to do some work, I'm going to sit here on hall duty, and you go, call some parents, following up with kids, just all these little things that add up, and we made a kind of exhaustive list, and I'm going to share them with them as a reminder throughout the course of the year, so, you know, that's what it's all about, there's so many things we have to do, but so much, so much that we get to do, and, and it was a nice couple of days. We're going to bring that energy into new staff orientation, which is on Monday and Tuesday, and as, as Judy said, it's, it's a really fun couple of days, and I remember vividly, more than anything, my, my first couple of days as a teacher, and going to that training, and starting the year, being excited, and having no idea what I'm doing, and being completely overwhelmed, but just excited to meet kids of any age, and it's going to be a great couple of days. We have a smaller group than usual, but it's going to be, it's going to be a really fun group, and, you know, supervisors work really hard to make sure that's a, a day that leaves them feeling prepared, so some motivation, some genesis, lesson planning, look, talking about our district goals and things like that. Almost done. Happy birthday to Kate, on the record. All right, 29, big deal.
Yes, 29.
Right? And today, we had our, we have our, are you, we have our three academic pathways, STEM Pathways has been, this is in year five now, and it's kind of just an unstoppable, unstoppable machine. They headed their kickoff program with incoming freshmen today. Our VP pathway, and our humanities pathway will be, you know, rolling out this year, really excited for the opportunities that presents to our students as well, so that's all I have to say tonight. Thanks.
Are there any questions or comments on the superintendent's bulletin?
Just one quick comment, so you just.
I'll, I'll do it.
So, Dr. Mulrooney, you just mentioned the STEM Pathways kickoff, my son was lucky enough to be able to attend it this morning, so he didn't tell me much, because he's a brooding 14-year-old, so he didn't really say much, but I think he enjoyed it, you know, so, so far, so good.
Yeah, it's a great day, good event.
So he was officially presenting bulletin items 1 through 59, and addendum, and read-in items number 60 through 84.
I was just, I was just about to say that. He totally stole my thunder, but it's all right. I'll get it next month.
All right, the secretary's report, Dr. McHugh?
Okay, so the business section, which obviously is your favorite part of this board meeting, I know you just wait for it the whole time. Normal month, we have our normal bills run. I did have a couple of questions on the large number of transfers. Robin's parting gift to the district was a 40-page transfer, which reallocated some salaries between account lines, but we also had last year and this year transfers. Board Secretary report was clean, Robin is now our treasurer, so she's on board on the other side, and that's helpful. We have the adoption of our purchasing manual and our standard operating procedure manual, we have our, our lunch price list out there, Chapter 192 and 193 funding, a motion for us to be included in the Morris County Vocational School District process, our school alliance fund, and the, the bid threshold has changed for the business administrator with the QPA, which is myself, so we're able to purchase up to $53,000 before we have to go to bid, which could help us save some money.
Are there any questions on the secretary's report? Okay, we had no official new business to come before the board, so we are now up to the hearing.
Ms. Cogan?
Sorry.
One quick comment, so I just wanted to welcome Mrs. Delafay to the board, and there's plenty of people on this board who have had a lot of experience, don't be, don't be afraid to ask, need for any, because I used to have been on the board, it's my seventh year, I think I would agree, you know, don't be afraid to do that, I think that's helpful to you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're up to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern, and state your name for the record, and please address the Chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful, if you'd like to address the board, to please come up now, sign in so that you're ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the town in which you live. If you are a parent wishing, wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to Bylaw 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Then we will go to the roll call vote of Superintendent Bulletin Number 2, items 1 through 59, with addendum items 60 to 84, and read-ins. May I have a motion, please? May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Abraham, second, Mr. DeVito. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes to everything, but just had a question on, since number 6C, as in CAT, is the 143, I was just wondering if I should abstain, or no, or something on that, on that policy while it's in discussion.
I'm sorry, you?
Number 6C was.
Policy 1, Bylaw 143?
143, and I just wanted to know if that requires a abstain, or no, or anything like that while it's?
It doesn't require anything, you can, you can, a yes vote would be to move that to the second reading.
Okay.
A no vote would be to, no, you're not in favor, but an abstention is that, or recuse yourself from it, is that you don't feel that you have enough information to make the decision.
Then I will just say abstain on that one, just that, number 6C, and yes to everything else.
Mr. Barrios?
I need to recuse on number 10, and also on the bills list, number 10163, I need to recuse on that also, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Delafay?
Abstain.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes. Okay, there being no further business, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Dr. Wright, Mr. DeVito, would you like to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.